I want to welcome everyone to the May Council Meeting. If you could please call the roll.
Rich Bardak?
Yes.
Kate Conway?
Yes, here.
At Hattenbach?
Here.
Alita Kaymine?
Here.
Tom Muthing?
Here.
Ray Warren?
Here.
Natalie Wolf?
Here.
Scott Larmour?
Here.
Kevin Frank?
Here.
Keith Wallace?
Here.
Rick Kay?
Here.
If everyone could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is our minutes from our last meeting. The minutes were circulated in the package. There was one very minor edit, and that was circulated to council members today. Are there any other changes, deletions, additions? If not, we can consider the minutes approved. We'll now move on to the Finance Report.
I'll be reporting on the financials for the month of March 2017. The report is included in the council packet, but to give you some summary comments, the earnings tax is the item that we take a look at each month with the Finance Committee, and the earnings tax collections for the month of March totaled $139,000. This is down about 42 percent from March of 2016's collection of $242,000. The Finance Committee did spend significant time analyzing the income tax data in terms of the categories that we look at, being individuals, net profit withholding, and an aggregate, we are down about $700,000 as of the end of the first quarter. We will continue to monitor that throughout 2017. So far this year, the village has taken in $436,000 in earnings tax. The second category I just want to mention is in regards to property taxes. It's allocated to the village twice a year from Hamilton County, but we have the opportunity to ask for an advance of the property tax monies, and so we have done that and have received $430,000 in property tax that has been advanced to the village. The local government fund netted $4,200 during the month of March, and that brought our total revenue for the month of March at $628,000. Our total revenue estimate for the year is $4.8 million, so so far this year we've collected about 23 percent of our revenues. On the expense side, the village spent about $469,000 during the month of March, giving us a total expenditures thus far of $1.2 million, which represents about 27 percent of the $4.6 million budget that has been spent. That leaves us with an unencumbered general fund balance at the end of March at $4.4 million, and at this point I'll stand by for any questions.
Are there any questions for the manager? All right, thank you. We'll now move on to one of the real privileges I have as mayor to have the oath of office for a new police officer. And so, Ryan, if you will, please come up. He's down here.
Thanks, everybody, for coming. We want to welcome our newest officer, Ryan Fair. With Ryan here in the audience is his mother, Robin Fair, his fiancee, Holly Haskin, and Holly's mother, Sherry Haskin. Thank you for being here. Ryan came to us with 11 years' police experience. He was formerly with the city of Silverton as well as city of Deer Park. Ryan brings a vast knowledge and police work to us. Interesting thing with Ryan, this is the third time he's applied with our department. So, and, you know, it says a lot. It says a lot that he didn't get hired the first two times, and he stayed on the list on the third time, and he still wants to come back here and be part of this department. It's just a matter of how it falls sometimes, and, you know, we're fortunate to have Ryan be so persistent to come here, and we're happy to have him.
Ryan, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Ryan Fair...
I, Ryan Fair.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America...
To support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And uphold and defend the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And uphold and defend the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
I swear to bear true allegiance...
I swear to bear true allegiance...
...to the laws, ordinances, and charter of Amberly Village.
To the laws, ordinances, and charter of Amberly Village.
I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties...
I will faithfully and impartially perform all the duties...
...of the office of Amberly Village Police Officer...
Of the office of Amberly Village Police Officer.
...to the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, officer.
Now, we'll point out that Holly's really nervous about this. She's already...
Should we sign this now?
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
There's two copies.
Yeah. We can just sign them all now. That's good. Thank you. Don't take the marriage. It's a bad way to start.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks again. We now have a number of residents and others to speak. What we do in this segment is, when I call your name, if you'll come forward to the podium and just state your name and address, and then you have, you know, three minutes to say whatever you would like. So, first on the agenda this evening is Christine Fisher.
Hi, my name is Christine Fisher. I live at 3004 Springer Avenue, and thank you for having me here tonight. I'm running for Cincinnati Public School Board, and of course, Amberly is part of our school district. I've had a passion for education my whole life, being raised by a family of academics and educators. My family vacations growing up weren't to Disney or to the beach, but to the American Educators Research Association conferences, year after year after year. But my family really instilled in me a sense of the role that education, in particular public education, can play in the lives of individuals and communities. We saw that with my mom's own family. She was raised without a lot of means in northern Michigan. Her father was an iron miner, and her mom worked in the school cafeteria to get a little bit of extra funds when they needed to. She went on to become the first in her family to go on to college, and she went later to become a professor, and raising her own family in a very different environment than she was raised. My path was a little bit different. I studied computer engineering after attending a STEM public high school, STEM-focused public high school, and then got a job out of school at a little place called Procter &amp; Gamble. And I've been there for 12 years as a finance manager. I've had a wide variety of roles there, from being the profit forecaster for Fabric Care, which includes Tide, our largest business in the company, to being the global facilities and real estate finance manager, helping to run all of our sites around the world, and managing people in those locations, managing our external contract, which is the largest contract that we have. I learned a lot in those two roles, and I'm currently in the very exciting world of toilet papers as the finance leader for Charmin, so if anybody has any questions about toilet paper, I can take those after. I'm more excited to talk about education, and I have two boys myself. My husband and I are raising them in Mount Lookout, and they're going to be going to public schools very shortly. We do spend a lot of time in your community as well at the JCC and formerly at Temple Shalom, which has now moved out of the neighborhood, but we still feel a big connection here. As I've learned more about what's going on in our greater community and realized that almost 50 percent of Cincinnati children are living below the poverty line, I realize that schools are one of our best tools to address that issue, and we're not using it as well and as effectively as we can. So, I've realized that it's time to act. What do I mean by that? Well, it's time for accountability. It's time that every dollar we spend of the public's is accounted for and is spent appropriately, and that the district is also accountable for outcomes, including graduation rates, third grade literacy rates. Everything that the board is supposed to be effectively managing for the schools, we need to be accountable to the community. Second, it's time for collaboration. The board needs to work with agencies across the whole community, with communities. You know, the intersection of where neighborhoods and schools align is really where you have great communities and great schools together. With the preschool promise, this board is going to have to collaborate with the United Way, which is the governing agency, and with all sorts of different practitioners across the city. And that promise, to be effective, the board is going to have to collaborate greatly with all of those agencies. I also want to bring more collaboration from the business community, coming there myself, and want to bring some of their resources to better help out our schools. Finally, it's time for transparency. The school district has to go back to the public almost every year now and ask for property tax levies to help support the schools. And in doing so, they need to be transparent about where they're spending every dollar and how they're making decisions, because the public is paying, the local public is paying a greater and greater share every year. And it's been found by Ernst &amp; Young, when they did a review of the board's spending, that they were spending their dollars pretty well, but when I go out and speak to the community, people have no idea what the board is spending their money on. And so, I think with some of my background, I could really increase transparency there. So, that's what I mean when I say it's time to act. It's time for accountability, collaboration, and transparency. And I hope that in November, you will support me in the election for Cincinnati School Board. Again, my name is Christine Fisher. November's a really long time away, though, so to keep me top of mind, go to Facebook, Vote Christine Fisher, and you can like my page, follow my campaign, you can go to my website, votechristinefischer.com, and find out what I'm doing there. This is my first time running as a candidate, so if anybody has any desire to get involved with the campaign, I'm always looking for volunteers and extra support, too. So, thanks again for having me this evening, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the council? All right, thank you very much. We'll now move on to Rabbi Urban Wise.
Mayor, councilpeople, thank you. This is the best part of being American, right? This is our democracy. Last time I was here was when the chief was installed. You're having a good time, chief, you know. Anyway, we are so thankful at Adath Israel for our police department. I can't tell you how thankful we are. Just last week, we had all staff four-hour training with Charles, Chuck?
Chuck.
Yeah, yeah. So, thank you very much. This is the first time I've ever come to speak to the council, so I think that says something in itself, and I'm here to speak to encourage all of you, not just to pass this resolution, this anti-discrimination resolution, but to do so with full hearts and souls and minds and passionately. I'm here as a citizen, a resident at Amberly Village, a neighbor of councilperson Conway. My wife and I, Kathy, have lived here for almost 25 years. We have three daughters who grew up here in this wonderful village. I don't know why, but they all live in Brooklyn now. I just don't know why. But I'm also here as the senior rabbi of Adath Israel Congregation. So, personally, I cannot encourage you strongly enough to pass this resolution, but also I need to inform the council, mayor, that our board of directors, almost two weeks ago, April 25th, unanimously, and I would add enthusiastically and passionately unanimously, endorsed this resolution, this resolution. You know, if we lived in the best of all worlds, we wouldn't need this resolution. We wouldn't need legislation to protect those who are vulnerable and at risk. But the fact is, as we all know, we don't live in the best of all worlds yet. Hopefully, our children will, our grandchildren will, but in real time and space, we don't live there yet. And therefore, we need these types of resolutions and legislation, as I say, to protect those who are vulnerable individuals and groups and those at risk. Again, I emphasize, it would be best if we didn't need it. Our sages taught us thousands of years ago, because they were people just like us, and they were living with challenges and realities just like us, that we always err on the side of caution. We don't assume anything. And we, here in Amberly Village, need to make that statement, need to take that precaution and not assume anything, and in a proactive way, make a very, very strong statement to other communities and villages and city councils as to what we need to do in this country of ours, to be sure that we're always pursuing what is just and what is right. And again, we can't assume anything in the present reality we live in. We can hope that at some time, we won't need such legislation, we won't need resolutions like that, but here and now, in real time and space, we do. And so, as a citizen, a resident of Amberly Village, this is the type of village I want to live in. This is the type of village that I want to say, this is where I live and where my wife and I live, and as a rabbi of a congregation in Amberly Village, I want to say, this is where we, as a synagogue community, as a religious community, this is where we are, and this is where we feel ethically, morally, at home. So, again, mayor, thank you. Councilpeople, thank you, and may you go from strength to strength.
Thank you very much, Rabbi. Any questions from the council? Okay, we'll now move on to Sandy Caltman.
Hi, I'm Sandy Caltman. I live at 6755 Fair Acres Drive, and my husband and I have been residents in the village for 29 years. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you tonight in support of Resolution 2017-17, the nondiscrimination resolution. To me, it's a no-brainer. If we want our community to be vibrant and successful, then we need to declare in a very public way that Amberly Village is a place that welcomes everyone, because through that diversity comes strength, and through that diversity comes innovation and creativity, and those are all things that are very important for us in our community. So, I urge you to pass the resolution, to take a look at the village's policies and procedures, to make sure that they comply with the principles that are expressed therein, and to continue to make Amberly Village a place where I am very proud to live and our neighbors, we hope, will feel the same way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, next, Abby Ukelis.
My name is Abby Ukelis, and I live at 6696 Fair Oaks Drive, and I've lived in Amberly with my family for 27 years. And there are a lot of things I love about living here, the proximity to everything, the natural beauty, the tremendous real estate value, and a feeling of safety and security, but the thing I love most is Amberly's live and let live attitude. I walk around my neighborhood several times per week, and on my way, I pass homes whose owners are Jewish, Christian, Muslim, Hindu, and atheist. There are married heterosexual and married gay couples, single, divorced, and widowed homeowners. There are cisgender and transgender residents. There are people with kids and people without kids. There are older people and younger people, people with health problems and healthy people. There are white people and people of color. And no matter our unique characteristics, we all pay our taxes, try to take care of our homes, and we all just try to live and let live, and that is what makes Amberly such an appealing community. We already practice nondiscrimination, so I urge the village council to pass Resolution 2017-17 to codify it for ourselves and to set an example for other communities. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Lacy Callaway.
My name is Lacy Callaway. I live at 2445 Twigwood. First of all, I'd like to say after the rabbi and the other speakers, I feel like I'm the preview coming on after the main attractions here, but I'll try to get through it here. I just wanted to state that being born and raised in the city of Cincinnati, I spent my career as a member of the emergency services for the city, and what's quite obvious, I spent my life as a member of what's considered a minor or minority group. Through those experiences, I've been exposed to all the neighborhoods in and around the area. I recently lived in Dayton, Ohio for 11 years, and when looking to return home, my wife and I researched all the neighborhoods around here, and we chose Amberly, one of the many reasons being the diversity of the community. After residing here for over four years, interacting with the neighbors, participating in the village activities and other community activities, I must state, we find it difficult to distinguish between the majority and the minority, if it even exists out here, which we're not sure it does. Now, I'm aware that action speaks louder than words, but I believe that to state the village's support for diversity and writing will make those actions stronger and only benefit the village, because I also believe that all groups, be it minority or majority, have some positives to offer, and that's why my wife and I fully support the diversity ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Okay, and now we'll move on to Amy Bogard.
Hi, my name's Amy Bogard. I'm at 8420 Spring Valley Drive, and I am the preview to the preview. Thank you to everyone here today, to my fellow citizens and village council and mayor, for this opportunity to speak briefly to bringing a nondiscrimination resolution to vote into policy here in our village. I'm compelled to say a few words today because I think on the surface, in this day and age of so much information, subjugation, litigation, mitigation, obfuscation, it is easy to wonder why add more to all of it in the form of one more resolution to the village bylaws. The answer to this question is that words matter. They matter perhaps more than ever before in this age of too many words, and perhaps even more importantly, the tone of these words matters as well. We, as a village, must set a distinct tone for ourselves as a community so as not to become drowned out by the chaos and vitriolic rhetoric of the rest of the world. When I was a fifth grader, my family moved to a town just down the hill from here. The cultural tone of that town at the time was one I would only come to understand later. My family, consisting of two closeted lesbian mothers, think Kate and Ally, which was the perfect televised version of the ultimate cover story, myself and my sister, eventually the arrival of my little brother, well, we didn't exactly fit the image of what was deemed acceptable as family to the folks of that small town. We had rocks thrown through our windows sometimes. It never felt safe. Part of the time was the time, part of this was the time we lived in, the rights of LGBT people was not something the rest of the world thought about, let alone considered, and certainly, the idea of writing into law provisions for the protection of these folks and others would have been unthinkable. But in some small ways, times have changed, at least for some people here and there. Many of us find ourselves discovering shared humanity with those in whom we might have only in the past perceived differences, and this is really a wonderful thing to those marginalized by greater society for race, religion, gender, or who our parents happen to love or how we crafted a family. Even if we ourselves do not feel marginalized in society these days, and if you aren't, consider yourselves lucky, we more than likely love or care for someone who is. I've now grown up, and I'm surprised to find myself residing just up the hill from where I spent those early difficult years, just up the hill from very complex times and difficult, misguided, and sometimes, but not always, ignorant people. I used to drive through Amberly Village as a teenager and imagine what lives the fortunate folks who lived there must lead, filled with so much green space and beauty. I still marvel that I have a small place in this amazing village, in this amazing community. I'm still the child of lesbian moms. I'm now also the co-parent of a young adult gay man about whom I worry much in this world of such hatred, discrimination, and abomination. When I heard that this village I now live in, this Amberly Village, is considering putting into words protection which might make someone who feels marginalized feel safe, I nearly wept, wishing I had felt that safety as a child. I urge council to do everything it needs to do to get this resolution into place. You, council, are the word-makers, the tone-setters of this beautiful village. Do the right thing, set the tone, create a safe place for anyone who might feel marginalized. This only makes our amazing community a better, stronger place in which to live. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move the Health Education Welfare Committee report up to next on the agenda, and so I turn it over to the vice chairman.
Thank you, mayor. I'm just going to actually make the motion for the resolution. I'll save any comments for later. So, at this time, I'd like to move that council pass Resolution Number 2017-17, which is a resolution committing Amberly Village to nondiscrimination and recognizing the benefits of diversity. And I'm going to go ahead and read the resolution. Whereas, it is now widely recognized that there are tremendous benefits from a diverse population to a community, whereas Amberly Village has seen increased diversity in its population over the past decades and has seen the benefits of this trend, and the village council wants to ensure that its policies and practices support this trend. Whereas, municipal leaders have a significant role in promoting an environment of mutual respect amongst all of its residents, and such an environment is critical to the success of the municipality. Whereas, it is clearly time that everyone should oppose discrimination of any kind and truly embrace progress so that everyone can feel included as full members of our community. And whereas, the Amberly Village Council believes that the most successful communities of the future will be those that are able to attract the most diverse and talented population to its community, and it is only through creating an environment where there is no discrimination will this be possible. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of Amberly Village, State of Ohio, however many members heard on this, concur. Section 1, the village commits to working within and across our community to create an environment where discrimination of any kind, including race, color, national or ethnic origin, age, religion, disability, sex, sexual orientation, gender and gender expression, gender identity, including a transgender identity, genetics, and military status will not be tolerated. Section 2, the village commits to a review of and update to all of its laws, policies, and procedures to ensure that all such are in accordance with the principles of this resolution. Section 3, the municipal leaders of Amberly Village commit to speak out whenever they become aware of cases where there are... many members heard on this, concur. Section one, the village commits to working within and across our community to create an environment where discrimination of any kind, including race, color, national or ethnic origin, age, religion, disability, sex, sexual orientation, gender and gender expression, gender identity, including a transgender identity, genetics, and military status will not be tolerated. Section two, the village commits to a review of and update to all of its laws, policies, and procedures to ensure that all such are in accordance with the principles of this resolution. Section three, the municipal leaders of Amberly Village commit to speak out whenever they become aware of cases where there are any acts of discrimination against anyone or group of people in our community. Section four, Amberly Village Council calls upon the leaders of the State of Ohio to pass legislation that is inclusive of all citizens of the state by including sexual orientation and gender identity in its definition of protected class of citizens.
Second.
So it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-17, committing Amberly Village to a nondiscrimination in recognizing the benefits of diversity. So we will open the floor to comments. Do you have anything else you want to say first?
I do. So I was asked about taking this nondiscrimination policy on more than a year ago. And I admit, though I thought it was an important thing to do, I sat on the request. Kind of wanted to wait till whatever the right time would be, not knowing that any time would be the right time. And I researched what other communities had done and found that though several larger municipalities in Ohio passed nondiscrimination laws that included LGBTQ citizens, only one other village in Ohio had done so. Why is this important? Amberly is small. We don't have a lot of businesses, and no one has complained about outward discrimination. But I looked around my own neighborhood, Rollman Estates, and I saw families of multiple ethnic and national origin, diversity of skin color and religion, and families comprised of two moms, two dads, and every, single parents, everything in between. And my family and my children have been the beneficiaries of Amberly's diversity. In committee, we learned that discrimination isn't always over, but merely being excluded from a protected class of people can lead to a feeling of otherness. I've been pleased to hear from so many residents by email and personally how important this is to them and to Amberly. We've heard from business leaders, religious leaders, who support this measure. Amberly may be small, but we are mighty. Our manager and our chief have both taken on the highest of leadership roles in their respective civic organizations. Amberly has led the way on environmental issues and on the pipeline. And now, when we pass this resolution, we will be leading the way for inclusivity as well.
Other comments?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to thank the vice mayor for bringing this forward. I sit on the, on the committee that, where we discuss this, and I think it's really a wonderful opportunity. We live in a, in a time when, when local government has a tremendous power to really bring people into a room, members of a community together into a room, to express how we really feel, when a lot of us, I think, feel that, that governments at other levels may not be listening to what we really believe and who we really are and what we really care about and who we really are. And it's really incredible to hear from all of you today, and thank you all for coming and sharing those stories, both today and at our HEW meeting a few weeks ago. Beautiful stories, all of them, and extremely important. And, you know, so I worked for the city of Cincinnati during the day for a council member, and we, we had a much more controversial, different kind of version of this, but we had a sanctuary city ordinance that we did, or resolution. It was a resolution. It was similar to this. It was sort of a, a policy that we already do and just affirming it. And it was, it was a very different tone in that room that day. It was a very hot topic, very controversial. And, you know, sometimes resolutions are about what we aspire to be. As the youngest member of council and maybe possibly the youngest person in this room right now, I think a lot about what, what, what kind of Amberly do I want to live in 50 years from now? And a lot of the things, you know, when we're in meetings and think about, how do we, how do we make this in the future? How do we make Amberly the best place that it can continue to be for your children and for, when I'm 100 years old and still living here? So, and, and the beautiful thing about this is that it sounds like, from everything that you're all saying, this is not aspirational. This is not something we have to strive for. We're already doing it. We're, we're doing this already. So it is really important. It was a beautiful, a beautiful way to say that words matter. We're, we're putting into words how we feel, making a statement, hoping to inspire others. And, and I think the vice mayor is going to continue to push us to, to move forward in committee to really make sure that this isn't, it's not just a resolution, it's not just our statement of values, but it is actually our laws, and it is actually there for posterity and, you know, we'll make sure that we, we get it right. But that we, we really put our, put our money where our mouth is. And it's, it's really heartwarming to hear that we're already, not, not us, we collectively in Amberly Village are already doing it. We just need to keep doing it. And it's beautiful, beautiful words by everybody. I have no, not even on, in the same movie theater as you guys were talking about before. So thank you all for coming and for speaking, and thank you, vice mayor, for, for putting this forward today.
Any other comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-17, committing Amberly Village to nondiscrimination and recognizing the benefits of diversity. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, now move, for those, for those residents that came in, and if you, if this was the only thing you wanted to hear, you're welcome to leave. Don't feel bad about it.
I have a very exciting ordinance coming up. You'll be surprised.
Okay, now move on to the police and fire.
All right. Moving on from the very lofty and idealistic to the very, very practical and mundane. The committee met on April 27th, and the first item of business we have tonight is an ordinance regarding pit bulls. In 1999, Amberly Village, along with other communities, passed an ordinance outlawing the pit bull breed of dog in our borders. This was most likely prompted by a surge of attacks across the country by dogs referred to as pit bulls. Kevin Frank, our law director, has made us aware that there are now court cases stating that a local ordinance banning pit bulls is considered unconstitutional, and so therefore our ordinance is not valid. He recommended that we repeal Section 90.24 since specific breeds of dogs cannot be outlawed. But it is important to note that even with the repeal of this section, the police still have the ability to cite for vicious dogs, dogs at large, and other dog complaints under Section 90. So we want to make this effective immediately. So first of all, I'd like to move that we waive the three readings on this ordinance.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on Ordinance 2017-07, which would repeal Section 90.24 of the municipal code of ordinance. Are there any questions or comments on it? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we waive the three readings on Ordinance 2017-07. Please call the roll.
Rich Barda?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wall?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Now I'd like to move that council adopt Ordinance 2017-17 to repeal Section 90.24, which is a pit bull ban that has been re-ruled unconstitutional. So move.
Second.
I'm sorry, I made an error. Thank you for that correction. Do I have to restate the motion? Thank you.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2017-07. Are there any questions or comments? If not, please call the roll.
Rich Barda?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wall?
Yes.
Okay, and finally, I'd like to move that Ordinance 2017-07 be passed as an emergency. It is necessary so that our code is in conformity with case law. So move.
Second. Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2017-07 as an emergency measure which would allow the ordinance to go into immediate effect. Are there any questions or comments?
I think this is, this is good. I know we're doing this for a very practical reason. I'm sorry I missed the police and fire committee meeting. But I think this is, this is a good move. People like these dogs, and they are usually lovely. I think, I don't know if it came up in the meeting, and I apologize for bringing this up now, but just always encouraging people, you know, these, these dogs are, are not worse dogs, it's, you know, and all of that sort of stuff. But in general, just as a reminder to, to folks, dogs do kind of, sometimes especially scary-looking dogs, sometimes scare people. And so keeping them on a leash sometimes would be nice. So I know some of the people in the neighborhood are, that's a little bit controversial.
That's actually not our ordinance, however.
I know, I know.
We have a job under control.
But just, you know, under control ordinance, but just, you know, might encourage people if, you know, if your, if your dog looks like it might scare people, to encourage folks, encourage them, it's not law, but to use, to use leashes. But we welcome, I would welcome pit bulls, that's fine. So thank you.
Any other comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Ordinance 2017-07 as an emergency measure. Please call the roll.
Rich Barda?
Yes.
Peg Conway?
Yes.
Ed Hattenbach?
Yes.
Alida Kaymine?
Yes.
Tom Muthing?
Yes.
Ray Warren?
Yes.
Natalie Wall?
Yes.
Okay, moving on. Next, we have Resolution 2017-12 proclaiming the week of May 15th to 21st, 2017, as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15th, 2017, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. This is an observance that started at the federal level back in 1962 under the Kennedy administration, and it is observed annually here in the local area as well as nationally. During Police Week, all Amberly Village police officers will wear a black band across their badges in memory of all the law enforcement officers who have given their lives in the line of duty as an important symbolic gesture. On Friday, May 19th, a local ceremony with Amberly Police involvement will take place at Fountain Square in downtown Cincinnati beginning at 11:00 a.m. A parade, which all are invited to walk in, will follow to the Hamilton County Police Memorial, which is located at the Cincinnati Police Department District One headquarters on Ezra Charles Drive. All residents are welcome and encouraged to participate, to show our thanks. I have personally attended this event several times, and it is really very moving and very, very important in our community. There will also be events happening in Washington, DC during that same week. So I move that we adopt Resolution 2017-12 proclaiming National Law Enforcement Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day. So move. Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-12 proclaiming the week of May 15th to 21st as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week, and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Okay, if not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-12. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, we will now move on to the, to the Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewers Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Hattenbach for filling my role at last council's meeting. The Streets, Public Utilities, and Sewer Committee met on May 4th, and we have three items on today's agenda relating to Resolutions 2017-13, 14, and 15. The first item relates to stormwater pipe televising. This program began in 2014, and we're now in the fourth and final year of the inspection cycle. Whereas during the first three years of the program, approximately 25,000 linear feet were assessed per year, the maintenance department has identified 10,000 feet to be assessed this final year. SWS Environmental was the only company to submit quotes for the televising of the storm sewers and to perform some minor clearing of debris. SWS performed the televising in the first three phases of the program and submitted the same per foot cost of a dollar per foot as in the previous three years. To te- televise a system would be understanding that sections of pipe that require more time additional setup, clearing bigger obstructions, or traffic control may add additional expense. So I, I move that council, so the committee voted to move this resolution to council, and I move that Resolution 2017-13 authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract to perform televising of stormwater facilities be approved by council. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-13, which would authorize the village manager to enter into a contract to perform televising of our stormwater facilities. Are there any questions or comments?
Just correct me if I'm wrong, and I'm sure our residents have no idea what televising is, but we are, I mean, it is literally what it sounds like. We are
Saying a robot.
Putting something in the pipes in this, to detect blockages, et cetera, before they cause problems.
Cracks and, cracks and pipes, anticipate more, I mean, basically what we're doing is, and village manager can elaborate and correct as well, basically anticipating things that need to be repaired now before they become larger, bigger expenses for the village.
Yeah, part of the confusing part of this, it's, it's called televising. It's recording of it. So it's a, it's a camera that's being inserted into all the storm sewer lines, and so it is looking for problems in the storm sewer lines that we can be aware of that, be proactive on that, so we can take in care of that, especially in advance of any kind of street paving. So if the street has to be torn up, we know about it in advance, we can get that storm sewer work completed before any kind of additional investment is made into the infrastructure. Good point, yeah.
Just want to add one other thing, elaborate. You know, there've been articles just in the national press about how poor infrastructure is in the United States, including stormwater systems. And so it's, it's real, it's the rare community that takes a proactive role in, in doing this type of work. And it is, it is a cost-saving measure in the immediate and long term.
Another thing.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-13. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-13. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
The next item relates to Public Works Week. The American Public Works Association sets aside a week in May each year to celebrate and recognize the important services provided by maintenance departments throughout the country. In our village, these services are multifaceted and somewhat unique. These include the typical, street repair and maintenance, stormwater restoration repairs, snow and ice removal, brush chipping, leaf removal, tree removal, maintenance of street signs, traffic signals and guardrails, vehicle maintenance, and what is more unique is being firefighters. Behind the scenes, the maintenance department, and this is something that I've reported and the committees reported over the last couple of years, behind the scenes, the maintenance department has been part of a proactive work ethic change that has led to considerable savings to the village, such as salt purchases, the construction of a new salt barn, and innovative use of brine instead of salt. And so with this resolution, so I'd like to move that Resolution 2017-14 proclaiming May 21st to 27th, 2017, as National Public Works Week. And certainly, if you see any of the maintenance crew on the street, don't hesitate to say thank you.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-14 proclaiming May 21st to 27th as National Public Works Week in Amberly Village. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2017-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Be noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
The third item actually starts, starts about two months ago. At a March council meeting, we recommended and approved stormwater pipe repair projects. Actually, there were three projects that were awarded to Inside Pipe Contracting for a total of about $71,000. This was about $38,000 less than the engineers' estimates and less than the remaining two bidders. During the pipe preparation work by inside, it was discovered that the 3260 Fairhaven Lane pipe was submitted for bid incorrectly. Bids were placed for a 24-inch diameter cured-in-place pipeliner, whereas the actual size of the pipe was 42 inches in diameter. The original cost of the pipe was $24,900, and the pipe difference would increase the cost to $50,100, or an increase of about $25,000. increase the cost to $50,100, or an increase of about $25,000. While this is an unfortunate accident, the total expenditure remains less than the engineer's original estimate. The installation of the cured-in-pipelines is scheduled for the week of May 18th, and will take two to three days to complete. So with this resolution, resolution 2017-15, I move that we authorize the village manager to execute a change order with inside pipe contracting.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2017-15 authorizing the village manager to execute a change order. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2017-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
And that ends our committee report.
Okay, we'll now move on to the Public Buildings and Parks Committee.
Okay, thank you. The Public Buildings and Parks Committee met on April 26th, and tonight we have resolution 2017-16 authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the repaving of the North Site parking lot. The project will consist of asphalt-based repairs in several areas, and the milling and repaving of the entire parking lot around the main building, and salt storage and equipment storage buildings. That does not include the North Site Road and the salt brine storage area. They're not part of the project. This is very much needed. These facilities were created in the late 90s, and the parking lots are original to that time. And then in the early, around 2000, whenever this building was being constructed, the administrative and police fire functions were put up at that location, and trailers had, were used, and the office trail, during the installing process for the office trailers, there were 43-foot diameter holes drilled into the parking lot for the footers to support the trailers. So it, long story long, it, it really needs to be done, especially with their daily activity and the settling and the big trucks that are up there. So staff contacted the village engineer to develop a plan of action for the repairs, repaving, and estimated cost. The engineer's estimate is below the state mandatory bid threshold, so the project was put out for quotes in March. The village received two quotes for the paving project, one from J.K. Muir, the contractor who is doing our 2017 street program, and from Barrett Paving. J.K. Muir submitted the lowest and best quote in the amount of $42,657, which was almost 20,000 less than the engineer, and less, was almost 20,000 lower than Barrett's quote, and $8,000 lower than the engineer's estimate. So the committee recommends the adoption of resolution 2017-16 authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for the repaving of the North Site parking lot by J.K. Muir, at a price not to exceed $42,657. So move.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2017-16 authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract for repaving of the North Site lot. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution 2017-16. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the resolution passes unanimously.
I just have one other item from this, our committee. At our meeting on the 26th of April, we also discussed the sport of pickleball, and the possibility of converting one or more tennis courts for this particular sport, which came as a result of a suggestion from a resident who spoke to council a couple of months ago. Staff provided information about the game, and how it's played, and how the court is set up, and noted that there had been no other requests for this type of opportunity in the village. So the committee's consensus was to recommend that we're not going to take any further action or recommend anything, but kind of file it away, glad to know about it, and we'll see what emerges in the future. And that concludes my report.
Any questions or comments? If not, we will now move on to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to mention three items out of the manager's report that is in your packet. Last month, I asked you to authorize me to enter into a contract with an electrical supplier. This is to provide electric for the village's municipal facility, so it would be this facility, as well as our municipal garage. And we worked this program through the Center for Local Government, which is a consortium of a variety of, of local governments, and we were successful in negotiating a price of .0445 per kilowatt hour. This bid came from Interstate Gas Supply, which is also the same company that provides the aggregation for our electric program here in the village for our residents. We are quite satisfied with that particular term. It is a contract that runs for, from June 2017 through May of 2020, and so we are locked in at that. We estimate we'll save about $4,100 over the life of that particular contract. So it was a great move on the council's part to authorize that, that, that contract. The second item I wanted to mention is in regards to Temple Shalom. The village was made aware that Temple Shalom is going to be demolished, and we sent a letter out to about 120 homes in that particular neighborhood, making them aware of it. And I just wanted to let council know that it looks like, instead of it being imminent in terms of being demolished this month, it's probably going to be either June, or possibly even July. Obviously, we don't control that. We did issue the demolition permit from the, from the village, but it's up to the property owner to engage their contractor and to remove the building. And the last item, I just wanted to personally thank the, the residents for passing the police levy, issue, issue five that was on the ballot last week. I think the most rewarding part of it for me was that I got a call from a resident who was, who regretfully could not come and vote on the levy. But he took the time to call me, and he was calling to apologize that he could not come and cast his vote. His wife was, needed to be tended to, and he was not able to make it here. And I just thought that was remarkable, that a resident would take the time to call and apologize for not being able to vote on a tax levy, of all things. So, very appreciative to the residents for their support of the police levy. That's it.
Any questions for the managers? If not, we will now move on to Chief's report.
Since I wasn't here last month, I'll probably have a lot to say. I, I'll just start off. I know the mayor will probably touch the levy, but I want to say how much it meant to the police department. You know, passing 87 to 13% is just, that's, that's 100% to us. I mean, to, to have the PAC committee step up, council members step up, step up, as well as residents, you know, and, and just do everything you guys have done. I took a little bit more active role this time, and I was exhausted just for a couple little things I did. I'm thinking, gosh, they did this all the time for us. So it, it does mean a lot to us, and we really appreciate it. But I, I read a post on Nextdoor, somebody saying it should have been 100% support of the police. But I, I truly think that, in this community, I feel that we have 100% support of our community, with the levy at 87%. There's always going to be people that are in different financial situations. We understand that, and we, we respect that, too. But thanks to you guys. But I'm not finished yet. I do want to touch on some things that we, we, you know, we've had a lot of change. We, you know, we talked about the increase in arrests, and all the different things going on in the community. But one thing I want to point out, just, I just want to point out some stuff from this past month alone, and actually just this past week. And I kind of want to tie it together with something else. Just this past week, on just routine traffic stops throughout the village, one, one traffic stop alone brought in 650 grams of marijuana, which is a sealed pack of one and a half pounds of marijuana that was brought in, 15 grams of cocaine, crystal meth, and multiple other drug arrests. We, this, in the past month, we probably had four or five heroin arrests alone. And then we've also arrested three people for drug trafficking. And, and majority, these, these aren't residents, these are people coming through town that are stopped on things. But, and, you know, we think, some people might say, well, why are you running traffic if they're just driving through town, and they're not bothering not to just let them go through? But the importance of that is, is, right now, I serve on the Chiefs Association on the board, and I, I actually oversee the Heroin Task Force. In April alone, we had 19 overdose deaths of heroin already, that they took on 19 more cases just in, within one month. That's 173% increase of what we've been seeing since last year. So these little arrests that we're making within the village, and other small communities are making, we're able to turn these resources over to the Heroin Task Force, and they do their thing. They made a 17 arrest last month alone, on the, on the heroin side. And one of the arrests actually was a, they investigate the death backwards, and one was an involuntary manslaughter from a dealer. So I just kind of want to point that out, that, you know, we, we've not, we've not had anything go bad, or wrong, but just know that this stuff comes through our town, and we're exposed to it. And you, and a lot of people see a lot of traffic stops out there, and wonder why there's two or three policemen, and that was the calls I kept getting this week. Why do you always have two cars, police cars, or three police cars? Could be the canine coming, but we do that for a reason. It's for officer safety. We've been fortunate, you know, on officer safety, we'll continue that. But that's all I have. Thanks.
Any questions for the chief? Now, we'll move on to the mayor's report. And like the manager and the chief, I'd like to thank our residents for their support on the police levy. And, and not just the specific voting. I, in the, in the public information meetings, you know, they, we try to schedule them as much as possible to get as many residents to attend as possible. The challenge this time was obviously spring breaks, and Jewish holidays, and things like that. But even the, the people that did attend, we very much appreciate the questions. They were great questions that were asked. And, you know, I think that's what's critical to us making the best decisions possible, is that we get that, that feedback from our residents. And, and just being out at the polls from 6:30 in the morning till 11:00, and it was another opportunity to get some excellent feedback. So very much thank our residents for the vote, for the feedback. And we are, as a council, I know, we are all committed to continuing to try to drive down the cost of, of the taxes to us, and try to find ways to do things smarter, to bring more revenues in. And I, I really think we're on a good path, and we're, and I, you know, I've said to people, this is part of a journey, and this was the second part of the journey. The first part of the journey was approving the levy the first time. But I think, you know, this journey, I think, will have a very positive, continue to have a positive role, and hopefully continue to drive the cost down. Secondly, on the Stormwater Advisory Committee, we have two members of the committee whose terms expire at the end of May. First, Nimet Jalzami has been on the Stormwater Committee for eight years?
Probably. Since '07.
Oh, 10 years.
Okay. And her term was up, is up at the end of May, but Nimet has agreed to serve for another four years. So I will come on to, I will make the nominations for both members at the same time. The other member, Adam Greenberg, has been on the committee for the, the past probably about a year. He, he took on the role of, he, he works at topics, and the Stormwater Advisory Committee does require that one member of the committee work for an Amberly Village business. Adam took on that role, and, and, and that term is up at the end of May. So I hereby nominate Nimet Jalzami and Adam Greenberg to serve four-year terms, which would be terms beginning June 1 of this year, which would extend to May 31st of the year 2021.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded that we appoint Nimet Jalzami and Adam Greenberg to the Stormwater Advisory Committee for terms that commence June 1st, 1st of this year, and end May 31st of 2021. Are there any questions or comments? If not, it has been moved and seconded that we appoint Nimet Jalzami and Adam Greenberg to the Stormwater Advisory Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being noted that the nominations are unanimous. The other item I wanted to report on was just some activity over the past month related to the Environmental Stewardship Committee. The Tree City USA Luncheon was held up in Lebanon on April 21st, and Amberly was recognized for its 13th year as a Tree City USA community, and also received a Growth Award. The Growth Award recognizes those communities that have gone a little bit beyond, or a lot beyond, what is required to just be made a Tree City USA. And this was our sixth Growth Award during that 13-year period. The luncheon was very nice, and it is something that, you know, we as a village should be very proud of. Related to that, on the following Monday, the village celebrated Arbor Day. We did do a tree planting, another, we planted another tree down along the walking track, which has been, a number of trees have died along the track, a number of pine trees, and we have planted a number of trees over the past few years. The, the great thing is, our maintenance staff are really making a very conscious effort to plant a diverse group of trees. We have, over the past 10 years, I think planted nine different types of trees, so that if there is something like the ML-4, or something, we won't have a lot of our trees hit, and hopefully this, this will lead to, again, continuing to have beautiful trees around not only Village Hall, but throughout the village. And then finally, related to the Environmental Stewardship Committee, the next meeting will be May 22nd, here at Village Hall, down in the community room at 7:00 p.m. Are there any questions for the mayor? Okay, is there any new business?
Yes. One thing that this resolution, the diversity resolution brought to light for me, is the messaging system, or the system of messaging council members on our website. I recently had the opportunity to send an email to Cincinnati City Council, and I was able to contact every one of Cincinnati City Council members by clicking one link. If a resident wants to contact every single council member about the same issue in Amberly, the resident has to write seven different emails, and click seven different times, rewrite the same issue, the email, seven times, and send it. The only other option is to send a general email about a maintenance issue, for example, and maybe hope that it, it gets to the right place. But other than that, I mean, thankfully, our, our members of council, and the mayor in particular, are very transparent. And when emails came in about, in support of this resolution, and they were sent just to the mayor, he shared them. But the way our system is set up, I can see maybe, you know, if we don't have such open and transparent transparency among council members, it's conceivable that a resident could send an email to one member of council, anticipating it be shared with all, and that member of council keep, keep that comment to themselves. So I know that we are updating our, our platform, and I think that that is something that, without actually using the system, we, we would not have been aware of it with just the templates that were sent for us to evaluate. Thanks.
I have three things, sorry. I know, it's been a long meeting. So first of all, just another thank you on the levy to everybody, and all, just wanted to especially thank all the volunteers, all the people who hosted parties, and, and did hunk and waves, some of them, and worked the polls. And I see a lot of the folks who did all of those things in the audience. And a special thank you, obviously, to the chief, but to Councilmember Conway, and to the mayor, who I think were the, really outworked, I think, all of us on all of this. So thank you so much for, for your help. Quick announcement, on this Wednesday, not, not an official Amberly event, but our first, hopefully, hopefully we'll do it again, preschool and kindergarten fair for Amberly, young families in Amberly. Lots of options for, for schools, and preschool in particular in Amberly, and it gets confusing for people. So we have a lot of young, new families, people with little kids, and we wanted to have a, an event like this, to be able to invite schools and programs to come and gather young families together. So we're doing it in the community room. It's this Wednesday night, 6:30 to 8:30. It should be a nice event. Everybody's welcome. It's open to everybody. But it should be, it should, should be an interesting opportunity to, to get, get the, get everybody together, and, and hear from the programs that serve our community. So that will be exciting, and looking forward to that. Please share the, share that with your neighbors, with, especially the ones with little kids, or if you see, you know, see people walking around with little kids, it's or if you see, you know, see people walking around with little kids, it's Wednesday night, six-thirty, eight-thirty downstairs in the community room. Um, the last thing is, um, kind of a question, uh, directed at, want somebody in the triangle here. So, um, without sort of getting too deep, but the, um, there was a, a large chain on Nextdoor recently, people have been very concerned about the traffic on Ridge, and I, I just, somebody maybe who could just give, like, a, a word of, um, calming word of how we are, maybe a reminder of how we're in the process on a traffic study and where all that, do you mind saying something about that? Okay.
In regards to, uh, some of the traffic that was, uh, I fell into that one, didn't I punt on that one? Um, some of the conversations that were occurring on Nextdoor last week and the week before in regards to the increased traffic on Ridge Road, uh, the chief and I did post something on Nextdoor last week, uh, trying to address some of those concerns, and just to, uh, share some of that information with you, there is currently a traffic retiming study that is going on, and it stretches from Ridge Road from Galbraith, and it goes into Reading. So it covers probably about six different intersections and traffic lights, and our process for doing this was through, uh, TEC Engineers, which is the one, which is the organization that did the traffic study for us as it related to the North Site development. Uh, they took it upon themselves and coordinated it between the village of Amberly and the city of Reading to determine how best to present to the state of Ohio Department of Transportation a retiming study that would allow them to look at each of these intersections, determine timing, but more importantly, determine if there's a better way of synchronizing the lights in such a way that would facilitate the flow of traffic. We all know that there's a huge volume of traffic on Ridge Road. Uh, it is affected by all types of things, primarily construction on seventy-one as well as seventy-five. Today, there were accidents on seventy-one, so we saw an increased amount of traffic in Amberly Village. It was closed this morning, was closed this afternoon. Uh, anytime incidents like that occur, that typically drives traffic into other communities, us being one of them, and then in addition to that, with the, the, one of the, the negatives that comes along with social media is that we tell all of our neighbors about it, and so everybody diverts off of those crowded interstates, and they, they travel into Amberly to get through. But this retiming study, I anticipate over the next few months that we will have information about it, that we'll be able to share, we'll make some modifications to the signals to see if we can increase the, the flow of, or not increase the flow of traffic, but try to facilitate the flow of traffic through the village, not just in Amberly, but also in, within the city of Reading. And we are working cooperatively together on that, and we are working, uh, through ODOT, who is funding this particular study, so this does not come at a cost to the village, that cost is being borne by the state of Ohio. So over the next few months, we anticipate receiving that information, and, uh, hopefully we can make some tweaks to it, but my word of caution is that with the volume of traffic, uh, there is only so much that the village can do to facilitate the flow of traffic, but we will try to tweak it in such a way that we can maximize that.
Thank you, yes. I mean, the, the, but thank you very much. I think the key, the key piece of that is council, mayor, administration, police, we all here, we totally understand, and, and there is, um, we, and many of us live in the area and, and deal with it every day, so we know it well. Um, so, thank you, and, and just keep it, uh, continue to, we'll continue to communicate that with, with, um, with folks as well. It's, it's, it's something we're, we're on, we're on it.
Anything else? If not, we can consider, consider the meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
You did, you did.